It is five o'clock and this meeting will come to order. Our first item is roll call. All of our trustees are here, our treasurer is here. We'd like to welcome our new director, Martin Walters. Our assistant friend, sorry, is here and administrative assistant. And our attorney will be here at the end of the meeting to give trustee training. So the first thing that we're going to do after that is apply allegiance. Our next item is the public comment. Speakers, where is, are they going to be?
They're going to be right here.
All right, it's always the red things that scare my eyes. All right, so speakers, please state your name and community and speak for no more than three minutes. Persons addressing the board are expected to observe a level of civility and decorum appropriate for a public meeting. No personal attacks or disruptions from audience members will be tolerated. So our first person is Amanda Brown.
Hello, my name is Amanda Brown. I live in Post Falls. I work with Community Library Network. I previously served as the CLN Youth Services Specialist focusing on homeschool. I am now a library specialist too, in the Library Services Department as of October 1st. But I don't speak for the library today, nor even from my library work experience. Today I speak to you as a mother and home educator. I have three children who use the library frequently. Before I worked for the library, I was well-known to the staff by the ridiculously large amount of space it took to store my books on hold. The books I checked out for my homeschool curriculum were not limited to the children's section. Why put limits on what my kids could learn? When we studied myths around the world, we checked out Norse Mythology by Neil Guyman. I read it aloud to my elementary age children, and they listened attentively to the classic tales of Balder and Loki. This book is in the adult nonfiction section. My eleven-year-old son doesn't love reading, but he does love all things technical. Last year, he and I read The Martian by Andy Weir. Weir wove real scientific facts into such a gripping science fiction tale that my son was hooked. We watched the movie after and imagined my glowing countenance when he turned to me after and said, "The book was better." He was disappointed that there was no sequel. This book is in the adult fiction section. These are only two examples of the many times I turned to the adult section to enrich my kids' education. The July 18, 2024 draft of the Library Cards for Minors policy gives no ability for me to allow my children to check out any materials in the adult section without me and my card. They will not have access to adult-level classics, cookbooks, biographies, history texts, or even just stories that contain topics that excite them to read. As a mother and home educator, only I should decide what my children can learn, read, or check out from the library. I don't want to limit their learning, and I don't want this board or anyone else to control or limit their learning either. I ask, I chose the open-access minor cards for my kids, and I want my kids to keep that access. Please do not take away my children's freedom to read on their own without, don't infringe on my parental rights or my children's First Amendment rights. Please leave the Library Cards for Minors policy as it is and let the parents decide.
Next, we have Suzanne Kearney.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Kearney, and I live in Post Falls. On behalf of our local brass group, Clean Books for Kids, I'd like to welcome Martin Walters as CLN's new library director. I hope Martin will be instrumental in filling our children's collections with all new literature. Martin, I'm sure you're aware of the ongoing battle regarding what materials are appropriate for children. I also assume you've become familiar with the recently enacted Idaho House Bill 710, the Children's School and Library Protection Act, and are on board with its objectives. Please understand that if you stand for the protection of children, some in this community will slander and criticize you, but Clean Books for Kids has your back as you seek to fulfill not just the letter, but the spirit of this law. Gain no mind to their rhetoric in the quarterly press. In the last election, this community voted overwhelmingly in favor of protecting kids. Stand with kids and your community will stand. I'd also like to follow up on my prior comment of July 2024 regarding the CU at the Library event, which was held at Post Falls in partnership with Brave Books. Approximately eighty-nine people from our community came together to stand for family values and imparting virtue to the next generation. Children enjoyed fun, educational, wholesome books about courage, truth, integrity, and honor. Nationally, the CU at the Library broke the world record for largest store ever with about thirty-five thousand attendees at over three hundred and fifty libraries in all fifty states. I was told that the library couldn't sponsor the event this year due to lack of planning time, but this will not be a problem for next year. Therefore, I'm looking forward to working with CLN to organize CU at the Library again in 2025, and I'm willing to undergo any background checks necessary to make that happen. Finally, all of the Brave Books which we read at this year's CU at the Library event are in like new condition, and I have spoken to Carrie Wilson about donating them to the library so that every child can have access to these books. Carrie has promised to put them into circulation, and I'm looking forward to seeing them in the collection soon. Many parents I've spoken to during the last two years have stopped using the libraries because they no longer trust them to keep inappropriate materials out of the reach of children. Let's change that by putting explicit books in their proper place, filling the staff with worthy books like these, and reviving the classics that we all knew and loved when we were kids. And I just want to add, I saw James Lindsay last night at Kindle Light Church, and he talked about Marxism and, you know, and child. I'm going to request that the CLN purchase that book, and I would recommend that you guys read that so you know what this battle is really about, because that's really what's going on. So that's it. Can I give these to somebody here, or should I deliver them to somebody else?
Thank you. Next, we have Michelle Lippert.
Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Lippert. I live here in Post Falls. Welcome to Dr. Walters. Dystopian literature such as George Orwell's 1984 Margaret Atwood's The Handmaid's Tale and Ray Bradler's Fahrenheit 451 serve as stark warnings, not as blueprints. Each of these novels portrays a government that oversteps its authority seeking to control its people by limiting access to information and invading their privacy through surveillance. While it may seem hyperbolic to suggest the proposed adult-only access policy could lead us down a similar path, it's not unreasonable to draw parallels. This policy is in fact a step towards a slippery slope of governmental overreach. Big Brother is truly watching, not just our license plates. Several members of this board cloak their intentions in the language of protecting children. However, history and literature have taught us that such justifications often disguise more dangerous agendas. This rhetoric is frequently employed to establish authoritarian control under the guise of moral leadership. Policy under discussion does not merely protect children. It targets adults by curtailing their access to books, thus imposing moral judgment on what should be available to consenting readers. Requirements for adults to sign a logbook in order to access certain materials or the looming threat of surveillance cameras in restricted areas feels alarmingly akin to the practices of totalitarian regimes portrayed in his dystopian works. So what comes next? Today you limit access to adult books. Tomorrow you may further encroach on personal freedoms. Are you seeking to protect adults or shame and intimidate them by enforcing punitive measures disguised as protection? Do not claim that this is simply about safeguarding society when it clearly steps into the realm of censorship and control. To those of you who support this policy, I ask, have you read 1984, The Handmaid's Tale, or Fahrenheit 451? If so, are you truly comfortable with how eerily close these fictional warnings come to our current reality? If not, perhaps the next step would be to ban these books. I urge you to reconsider, lest you inadvertently usher in the very dystopia these authors sought to warn us against. Thank you.
Great. Next, we have Chanel Huggins.
My name is Chanel Huggins, and I am a citizen here in Post Falls, and I'm also. As a patron and a parent, I want to express my concerns regarding the proposed adult-only areas in our library, which I believe not only violate the CLN's member confidentiality policy, but also contraband Idaho State Law regarding parental rights. The member confidentiality policy clearly states that they protect each library user's right to privacy and confidentiality concerning the information they seek and the resources they can assault. Requiring patrons to sign a logbook would compromise this privacy as it allows others to see who accessed the areas, and an installation of video cameras would further infringe upon this policy. Additionally, the proposed restrictions on minor open access cards conflict with Section 32, Chapter 10 of Idaho State Law, which recognizes that parents with legal custody have the fundamental right and duty to make decisions concerning their children's education. As long as parents provide a signed release allowing their children access to these areas, neither House Bill 710 or the policy placed by the board should override parents' fundamental rights to make decisions about their children's education and access to information. Books are educational and informative. Idaho's Parental Rights Act safeguards parents' rights to nurture and direct their children's upbringing and education, and any governmental effort to restrict these rights must meet strict scrutiny standards. I believe it is crucial that our library remains a space where both privacy and parental authority are respected, ensuring that all families can make informed decisions about their access to information. Thank you for hearing my concerns.
Next, we have Teresa Burkett.
Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Burkett. I live in Post Falls, and I am the president of the Library Alliance in North Idaho. Our organization is firmly opposed to any form of censorship. According to the Cambridge Dictionary, the definition of censorship is the action of preventing part or the whole of a book, movie, work of art, document, or other kind of communication from being seen or made available to the public because it is considered to be offensive or harmful or because it contains information that someone wishes to keep secret, often for political reasons. Placing books behind locked cabinets that only adults can access is sensitive. We believe that installing video cameras or surveillance in the adult-only section violates our rights to privacy and sounds very similar to the book 1984, which depicts a future where a totalitarian government controls every aspect of its citizens' lives. I would think, Ms. Addison, you would oppose this since you spoke against licensed play readers. We pry all adults to sign a logbook if we're accessing the locked cabinet or room, infringes our privacy rights, and violates your policy titled, "Community Library Network's Member Confidentiality Policy", which states, "Protect each library user's right to privacy and confidentiality with respect to information sought or received and resources consulted, borrowed, acquired, or transmitted. The privacy of the individual is not to be infringed." Referring to it as a smut room reflects poorly on your professionalism, Mr. Hanley. Regarding the policy for minors, you are proposing to eliminate open-access cards for minors. This raises concerns about parental rights as parents are best positioned to understand their children's needs. It's important to consider that some children may demonstrate higher levels of maturity or intelligence, which may warrant access to their adult collection. Excluding them could be seen as a form of censorship. Finally, as Mr. Hanley emphatically stated in his comment on March 16, 2023, "I have righteous anger." Me too have righteous anger towards this restrictive policy. And you have been, according to Mr. Hanley, informed repeatedly by your taxpayers of our dislike of your religious agenda. Will you finally listen?
Next, we have Anne Goff.
My name's Anne Goff. I live in Post Falls. Welcome, Mr. Walters, to Northern Idaho and to the Community Library Network. I look forward to seeing the reintroduction of books to our libraries that will promote lifelong learning, that will help develop happy, healthy, prosperous children and families. This is a subject about which our community cares deeply, and we have made clear through our elections that we expect the harmful, obscene books removed from the minor section of our libraries. A small cadre of loud voices will attempt to convince you that listening to the expressed will of the people and following the law and common decency somehow means trampling on the needs and rights of the local community. They will tell you that removing inappropriate books from the children's section somehow tramples parents' rights, but they won't quite explain how. They will tell you that highly sexual books are necessary for the intellectual development of children, and they'll ignore all the evidence, the overwhelming evidence, that sexualizing children stunts intellectual development. And they'll ignore all the evidence that sexualizing children promotes depression and triggers a host of harmful behaviors, from eating disorders to substance abuse, to depression, the problems no no end. They will tell you that because the internet is full of sex and insanity, the library definitely shouldn't be a place where children can escape it. It is not the place of a government library to seek to undermine the development of children or to fundamentally transform the culture of a community. And while these Dirty Books for Kids voices will be satisfied with nothing less, the community is grateful for the many, many hours of hard work this board has put into building a library system that we can be proud of, a library system that reflects our community values and standards, that cares for children and their well-being, that makes available good books that promote a love of reading and the written word. Thank you for joining us in this endeavor.
Next, we have Jeff Webb.
Good afternoon. My name's Jeff Webb. I'm a U.S. citizen living in Post Falls, Idaho. I'm a father that raised five homeschool children, and I'm a grandfather. Regarding the adult access and minor open, minor open access cards, I wish to have you understand and comprehend slippery slope that you're about to embark on. Knowledge and information walked away is tantamount to banning. Banning leads to censorship. Censorship gets censorship. And all of this usually is fed by conquest, religious dogma, or just plain-out fear of the misunderstood. Qin Xinhua in 2013 B.C., after declaring himself first emperor of China, burned hundreds of thousands of rolls of script and killed hundreds of Confucian scholars in the case that they might contradict his version of history. The Catholic Church has a long history of burning and banning books that disagree with the Church, including Martin Luther's works. The Library of Alexandria was sacked and burned many times over centuries, ultimately by the Muslim leader Khalid Umar in 640 A.D., burning hundreds of thousands of scrolls from hundreds of nations. The Nazis leading up to World War II banned and burned books by Jewish intellectuals office. We know where that went. And in recent history, right here in the good old USA, in the eighties and nineties, I witnessed firsthand, via news reports, books being burned in New Mexico, Texas, and other states. A nod to others, Fahrenheit 451. Again, it's leading to willful ignorance by denying what's there. The Bible is the most challenged and banned book in the world, along with other religious texts. But U.S. President Y. D. Eisenhower stated, "Don't join the book burners." Don't think you're going to conceal faults by concealing the evidence that they ever existed. Don't be afraid to go into your library and just read. I believe the actions that are being proposed violate the member confidentiality policy, and this is backed up by Idaho Title 74108.
Finish that, please.
Yes. Would reveal identity of library patrons checking out, requesting, or using information from the library. In short, let parents parent. Let them decide what is appropriate and how they want their children to access that information. If they trust their children will come into the library, check it out. That's for them to decide. Thank you.
Next, we have Jess Ling.
She's helping with going through these notes.
Okay, so next we have Bethany Sandberg.
Bethany Sandberg from Athol. I have three boys, fifteen, thirteen, and nine. Fifteen-year-old just started driver's ed. Please pray for us. We made that decision that he was ready. My husband and I, we talked about it. We knew that he would be ready, not just because we said he would be ready, but it would take guidance on our part. We would need to do the work beside him. We wouldn't just send him off to driver's ed and say, "Have a good time. Don't run over anybody." It was going to require work on our part. We made the decision to allow them open-access cards so they are empowered to pick out books that they want to read. It requires guidance on our part. It requires us watching them, going through it. What do they check out? Sometimes things from the adult section, like Alvin and Hobbes, Lego books, cookbooks. Definitely want them to get the cookbooks. Bottle building. I've told my fifteen-year-old, he can come talk to me about anything. He's fifteen. Isn't that happens? If he has a question about his body, he has a question about something. Would I rather have him go get a book that is going to give him factual information of Googling? But I'd rather have him ask his friends, who are going to give him information. Am I be false? He Googled it. Is he going to see things that he never has thought of his head? Please, let me do the job that God gave me. Be be a mom. Let me guide my kids. Please leave the policy as is. I am guiding them. Please let me do that. Thank you.
Next, we have Heather Greenman.
Hi, been a long time. You weren't here. You weren't here. You weren't here. So those of you who've been here know me. Oh, you're changing her color. Oh, wow. So I think it's Heather Greenman, Post Falls. I think it's, there's, it's hard to understand exactly what you all are trying to achieve without actually understanding what the law actually says. I find it's beneficial to actually go and look at the text of the law. So I'd like to read it here. Title 18, Chapter 15, 17B, that's Crimes and Punishments: Children and Vulnerable Adults, Children's School and Library Protection Act, which took place, it took effect July 1st. So I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the things that are crucial to understanding what you all are trying to achieve. It says, "Notwithstanding any other provision of law, a school or public library or agent thereof shall not promote, give, or make available to a minor any picture, photograph, drawing, sculpture, motion picture, film, similar visual representation, image of a person or portion of the human body that depicts nudity, sexual conduct, or sadomasochistic abuse, and that is harmful to minors. Any book, pamphlet, magazine, printed matter, however reproduced, or sound recording that contains any matter pursuant to Paragraph A of this subsection or explicit and detailed verbal descriptions or narrative accounts of sexual excitement, sexual conduct, or sadomasochistic abuse that taken as a whole is harmful to minors or any other material that is harmful to minors. Any minor who obtains material or parent or legal guardian whose child obtained material in violation of those provisions of this section from a school or public library shall have a cause of action against such institution if the institution gave or made available material harmful to minors, or they failed to take reasonable steps to restrict access by minors to the material harmful to minors." Sexual excitement and sexual conduct are also clearly defined in Title 18. I would encourage people here who do not, who have not actually read that, to read that. Based off of those definitions, it's very clear to me that you all are trying to follow the law. True book banning, yes, we need to avoid that. True censorship, we need to avoid that. We actually have censorship happening in our federal government right now, partnering with entities like Facebook and social media companies to limit freedom of speech. That is true censorship. But the library cannot carry every book on the shelf, okay? And there are sections for a reason. We have sections for children, adults. We need to use those. So I want to thank you guys for what you're doing. And if you do the minor access part, I think it's possible to make all of those other sections in the adult section available. But those sexually explicit books, I think that's a good idea, and you'll be able to follow the law doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. So it looks like we have a few minutes left of public comment. If one more person wanted to speak, why not? State your name and community, please.
Stephen Davis and Hayden Lake. Fourth-generation Iodolyn. I have twin daughters who are both teachers. Have three, four grandchildren in the high school and middle school realm. And looking at what's been proposed strikes me as a little strange because based upon my experience with my daughters, my grandkids, there's, the horse has left the barn. You have social media, you have the internet. And what we're trying to do here in the library, to me, we're trying to fix something that's not broken. My daughters and my grandchildren use the library freely, and I do believe it's also the parent's responsibility to supervise access to all sorts of input, whether it's social media, or the internet, or the library. And I think it's very, very hard to have people judge beyond on the moral values. Also, I think my experience with the Idaho libraries, after going through them with several kids, is that the existing system of selecting the books and categorizing the books has served us well. And we're trying to fix something that's not broken. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next, we have the consent agenda, the Minnesota regular meeting, August 15th. Minutes of budget hearing, August 8th. Minutes of special meeting, meetings, August 8th and August 2nd. Uh, minutes of budget hearing, August eighth, minutes of special meeting, uh, meetings, August eighth and August twenty second. C I N meeting minutes, June and July, C I N financial statements, July and August. Trustee Annie.
I had one little issue with the. August twenty second, uh, again, I think it was, I was the same one as last time, but it doesn't say minutes at the top, so. It looks, and he's the word minutes added, I believe, to the heading, so. Very minor, just to, that's all right now on the minutes.
Assistant. Good question, um, about the, um, C I N. This June twelve. Uh, I don't know if, if Lindsay can answer this, but it's just a curiosity, uh, under new business, the concern from carrier. Regarding delivery of non traditional library of things items. Do you know anything about that and what the issue was?
Uh, we do. Yeah, I was going to mention Director of important. We had a seat yesterday.
Okay, I'll wait. Okay. Oh, interesting. Okay, thanks. Assistant.
And Nick, one other comment, uh, on regarding the C I N's financial report. Um, I don't know who that generous donor was, was on line in number eighteen, and it may have been there for a few months. I don't know, but it looks like a hundred thousand dollars. We expected. Um, budget wise, ten thousand dollars in this fiscal year. We got a hundred thousand dollars. And that probably accounts for the fact that a hundred hours, a hundred thousand dollars extra was spent on e-books and materials on the line twenty two. But I don't know where a hundred thousand dollars came from, but that's very generous if it was a donation. That's all.
Assistant Director.
A way that the C I N budget works is that they just allocate ten thousand dollars at the start of the budget. And then the donation is actually what each of the member libraries contribute throughout the year. Um, so it's, it's always going to be higher than the amount, but it's not a single person's donation into the library. The library that, that have donated throughout the year for their election.
Assistant.
Well, I'm. First minutes, uh, August fifteenth, page three, number thirteen. Uh, discussion of CLN's position on D E I. I see that loss moved to strike the words, but. The board reached a consensus to keep. The other words there, but I don't see where it actually motion passed. I'm waiting. But.
Uh, consensus would just be a general agreement without a motion having been made.
But I did, I made a motion, and I thought we moved. The consensus was about the other part of the sentence. I thought, I thought there was a motion. Made and we approved the motion, and we voted on it.
Yeah, there was on the first part.
But it doesn't say what the, what it passed, right?
Uh, it, yeah, uh, M is for motion and C is for carry, meaning that it passed.
Oh, is that what that means? Okay.
Okay. There any other questions or comments? All right, uh, I would accept a motion to, um, to approve the consent agenda with, uh. The change is noted.
Move to accept the consent agenda with the changes noted.
It has been moved to accept the consent agenda with changes noted. A further session, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Hey, um, sorry, again, Ms. Was there any opposed? Sorry, uh, so the consent agenda is accepted with, with changes noted. All right, so next we're moving on to Community Library Network, July twenty twenty four, August twenty twenty four, financial statements. So, uh, Assistant Director.
Um, you each received the table packet that has an updated version, um, of the August financial statements, so the one that was mailed to you in between.
Assistant.
So this, we, we did not, uh. Approve a July twenty twenty four financial statement. That was one of my. Objections last time. Um, it wasn't provided. I, you know, I see August twenty twenty four, we.
It's got both, it's got July and August.
July and.
New term, where's July? Oh, it was in the home packet. Was it July and August?
You see August. I got it, thanks.
The table packet had just August. The home packet had July and August, at least mine did.
Yeah, it's had the mine.
That was the one provided that was. That was from last month. But we didn't vote on it.
Well, that's up for approval today. Um, did you find dinner? Want to take a look at my number?
The, this is the one that we were given last month at the meeting, but we didn't approve it or vote on it. Cause I had my notes here from the last meeting. That's the one we're talking about. I, I didn't have one today, a new one.
We can clear. Uh, Assistant Director.
In your packet that was mailed to you, you should have both July and August financial statements that would be new to all of the trustees. And then in your table packet, you should have an updated version of just the August ones. So we would be looking at the August table packet and the July mailed ones, and they would all be on green paper. And we have not ever looked at them. We have this be the first time to look at them and vote on them.
Uh, trustee Annie.
Yeah, so if I can jump to the August, uh, financial, it appears in a good way that our. Expenditures are significantly below what we budgeted for. If I'm reading this correctly, when I, when I go to say to the first grouping of salaries and benefits. Um, it shows that we budgeted for three million nine hundred seventy seven thousand dollars and change. The actual is three nine, three million three hundred fifty five thousand. And from what I can calculate on that, we use about three hundred thirty one thousand five hundred hours a month. So if we plug that number, if we add that to the actual year to date. For this particular fiscal year, it appears to me that we're about two hundred ninety thousand dollars. Uh, in, in a good way. I mean, we have, we, we spent, we'll, we'll probably by the end of September. We'll have two hundred ninety thousand dollars, uh, extra, so to speak. It appears we have a lot of extra carryover created here. I'm just, and it's good, I guess. Um, going down to another line or two, uh, line item number, let's say thirty one. Well, that was a question, actually. That was databases. We, um, budgeted thirty seven thousand and we spent fifty five thousand, so one hundred fifty percent of budget. I'm not sure what happened that. But I'll stay with my theme there. I jumped to one or two other ones. Going down to the number thirty nine, line, line thirty nine, total programs. Materials and services, we budgeted seven hundred twenty five thousand dollars, and we've only spent to date three hundred twenty thousand dollars. From my calculations, we spent about, divided by twelve, sixty thousand dollar per month. If you add it to what we spent so far, we're going to have an extra three hundred forty four thousand five hundred dollars. So anyway, we went through a couple of those. I'm not sure if that theme goes all the way through the whole. I could have one or two more notes. I don't, I won't read them all, but. It appears to me that our expenditures are significantly below budget, which I guess was good, great, and it's going to create extra funds. I don't know.
Assistant Director.
Um, I would just point everyone to line eighty, which gives, um, like the full picture of the library where. We should be at ninety one point six seven percent expended, and we're at eighty eight point eight eight. So we are under, but I don't know that I would say that that's significantly under. Um, and. Like for the database question, I believe we talked about that. And then, um, we had put a database in our, um, collections budget, which should have gone into database. And so this year it's in database, but then it wasn't budgeted correctly. So that's why we're open. And then, uh, I think that's enough.
Assistant boss.
So on the, um. Later on the carry forward, it's mentioned about seven hundred and sixty thousand or something that. We've received from ICRA. Paying, and, and it's in the I C S. Is, is that buried under this unaudited? Budget for showing how much money since it's in I C S. Is there some? Income showing that we've got a bunch of extra money from ICRA? Is that just being kept set aside in I C S?
Can you wait and talk about that?
I just wonder if it's on, I wonder if it's on the sheet. If we're being, is it on the, uh. Not the balance sheet, but the income statement. Is it on here someplace? And it's obscuring, making something a little better.
Yeah. Administrative assistant.
Yes, the insurance income is reflected within the income statement. As it comes in, depending on what that is paying for, it goes into that line item. So you may see some items that have more money than you would anticipate, and that's because the insurance money's there and has not been spent yet.
That's really disturbing to me because it's showing revenue is three hundred twenty seven and the whole net income. Now on line eighty four, but. Where's the seven hundred and sixty eight thousand distributed in here?
So you're referring to the I C S and where the, the money is sitting in the bank at the I C S. This is showing the year to date actual that we spent. So I see what you're saying, that income would not necessarily be. So here because. This is what we're spending each month.
Oh, we've got years to date actual. I just wondered if this theme recorded its income someplace on, on. Option lines for, is it income or is it just being held someplace?
Um, trustee Annie.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just maybe that, this reflex. On line forty five, I'm looking at the August report. Line forty five, uh, for Athol, for example. It appeared to me we budgeted fourteen thousand dollars. We actually got eighty seven thousand dollars. So I imagine that's how much money was taken out of I C S, put in, and was spent. Uh, so is that possibly reflecting, am I reading that? Okay, um, so I guess the money. From Ike, initially, I think we were gonna, we thought Ike was going to pay the vendors directly. Then we learned, I think at one of the meetings, that money was coming to the, uh, C L N. And then we would expend the money to do the different things with the improved amounts they gave us. And so you can see that, uh, Athol, for example, is six hundred and twelve. Percent above what was budgeted, so I expect that was for repairs that have already been paid and paid for. But I, I don't understand Postfall that nothing's spent though. Well, we spent something, but nothing near. It's like. We've only spent seventy eight percent of what is budgeted, so I don't understand. Maybe there were no bills yet for Postfalls. I'm not sure. I left. But Athol makes sense to me. I understand that. I don't understand Postfalls. It doesn't show any significant expenditures.
Assistant, Assistant Director.
So when we put the money in the Athol line item, um, that was money specifically for the pack out of that facility. So. That money was treated slightly different because we got it right away. Um, and the other funds. Are, are not reflected, like you said, in Postfalls. So that Athol chunk that we got for the pack out. From, for one vendor is much reflected in why it shows as you said, forty, or four hundred and thirty five percent.
Um, okay, so actually I have a question about lines twenty six and twenty seven, the adult programs and children's programs in the August. Uh, it says that we're at forty five and, and twenty three percent spending those. It seems like at the end of summer and so close to the end of the, uh. Budget cycle that those would be higher. Um, Assistant Director.
Um, to, to be frank, I think staff were very reserved in their spending this year because there was. Um, concern about the type and quality and quantity of program and limitations. And that were coming at them. So normally that those line items would be much more spent. Um, but they were quite conservative. And then also, we have to remember that, um, like at Postfalls, that's one of our highest programming. Um, locations, and we didn't really have many, we didn't have the same quantity of program that Athol or. Um, but I do think there is some just general concern from staff about spending too much.
Okay, uh, trustee Robinson.
Um, and line item seventy, under legal and professional. First off, um, I believe it should be seventy A and seventy B, seventy one A and seventy one B. Under seventy. And then, uh, did we not get a invoice from our attorney this month or, yeah, August? We did not.
Correct.
But one will be coming. Is it late or is it not? Or you already have it now?
It could, no, and, and the receipt date varies.
Okay.
Assistant.
So back on, uh, I'm concerned that I have an ICRA payment. I understand this is, this is an expense that Athol, it's money that was spent. I'm asked about the income. And I didn't see it on here anyplace, but I don't know whether it's being hidden from me. Was there, there must have been income to offset this eighty seven thousand. Where was that income shown? It's like. So we're, we're showing, we show the expense, but. Is there some line item up here under income? That's ICRA. Payments. I, I don't see it, so I don't, I don't know why I set the eighty seven thousand. Like it came from ICRA, pretend I don't know whether seven hundred and sixty seven thousand is still something like that.
If it would be helpful to the board and if the director agrees, there has been two separate Excel spreadsheets created, one from the administrative assistant, one from the previous. Business manager. One is done chronologically, the other one is done by general ledger number. And it reflects the income and the outcome for just the insurance. And we can provide that if the director agrees at the next meeting.
That wanted?
That would be helpful, but I'm just looking for an answer. Is, is the income showing on this income statement? Is there a year to date?
I'm not trying to hide anything, but because I'm still learning, I'll need to give you that answer next up, please.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I'd like to see it.
Again, please.
I moved to accept the. Uh, financial statements for the month of July and August twenty twenty four.
It has been moved to accept the financial statements, um, C L N, uh, for July and August twenty twenty four. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it sounds like it was unanimous, and the financial statements, uh. Okay, it sounds like it was unanimous and the financial statements uh for July and August twenty twenty four are accepted.
We didn't do the budget or the balance sheet. That's next. Oh, that's for the financials.
Okay, so we are now on to discussion of Community Library Network, August twenty twenty four, carry forward balance analysis.
And trustee class?
Well, I worked this out myself. Since I didn't have anything before I saw the sheet, but I've got two three really big questions, maybe we can go straight to it. ICRA claim funds uh the middle of the sheet seven hundred and fifty thousand five ninety five, and I go back and I look at the one that we had from uh that was done by the previous business director for the end of August or the end of June, and it's six hundred and fifty four. Did ICRA pay us more money or how did we go from six fifty four up to seven fifty? That's one question. Second, the line right under it, estimated expenditures, September, our burn rate is about, so it's less than five hundred thousand. Uh, that's how you get six million a year. How in the world do we have seven sixty five as expenditures for September? And we've only got two weeks left. Are we really thinking we're spending seven sixty five in September? And then the third question is down uh right before the double line was some um reserve, estimated reserve fund for July through September thirtieth, three point seven million. And that's being subtracted. We're here two weeks from the end of September. Why are we, and and the ICS account and everything, that was all based on the end of August. Why isn't this based on August uh thirtieth through or just the month of September? How do we get three point seven million in there? Even though we're using the bank balances from the end of August. I I I totally question that number. That's that really sets us back. I don't know what that is.
Administrative assistant?
Thank you. So looking at the ICRA claim funds received for Ethel and post falls, yes, we have received more ICRA money.
Okay.
And that will be reflected in the Excel spreadsheet that you'll receive next month if the director agrees. Expenditure uh expenses. You said September first through September thirtieth. Why is it above the normal five hundred thousand a month that we spend? The reason is because we're coming up to fiscal year end. So September thirtieth is when our fiscal year ends, and so any of the coordinators that have not spent all of their budget can choose to spend that through the end of September. So we traditionally spend more than five hundred thousand in the last month of the fiscal year. And then for the one with the double line you said, for the carry forward needed for October first through January?
Well, it's the estimated that was reserved for July first through September thirtieth, three point seven million.
Yes, so that's the expenditures. You can see that the available funds above are three point nine million and the estimated reserve funds and expenditures are three point seven million. And this is actually
Oh, that's the sum of all lines.
It's correct. So everything in the reserve funds is added up to come up with that three point seven. And this is actually through uh mid-January is what we're anticipating. So the previous business manager met with me this week and calculated what we're going to be spending over the next four months and will we get to January when we get the next property tax income without running out of money? So the answer is no, we won't run out of money, which is good news. And you can see the available to assign to unexpected expenditures or emergencies is two hundred and thirty five thousand nine hundred fifty four dollars ninety three cents. So this is a best guess based on how much we spend each month on our different vendors. And it was a very complicated, interesting process to watch. And it's from years and years of knowledge and understanding the vendors to be able to come up with that best guess. So that two hundred and thirty five thousand is about what we'll have, we anticipate mid-January before the property taxes come in. And you'll notice at the bottom that that's running very lean. The best practices for approximately two additional months for emergencies means that we really need to have about eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars in our working operating budget, but we will only have about two hundred thirty thou- thirty five thousand dollars of carry forward left. And so we're just running really, really lean. And that's okay, we can do it, but it's a little risky. And you can see that the accounting principles, that we really should have six hundred and sixty two thousand more in carry forward for good accounting principles.
Thank you.
Um, there are no further questions. Uh, I would entertain um, oh wait, nevermind. It's uh not something that we need to vote on. Alright. So if there is no further discussion, we will move on to the next thing, which is the Harrison Libraries Facility project. And did staff have anything to say beginning of the discussion?
Hi. Um, anyway, it's a day four for me, so believe me, I'm not entirely optimistic on everything. But I did speak uh at length with uh our facilities coordinator, Randy, as a data. And um, and so I think the memo pretty much is, he self-explanatory, there was a decision for my time, that fifty six thousand dollars would be earmarked for this project and was carried over, I think, in the speed of twenty three. Um, when the time came, what came through was a margin of the double, so a hundred and four thousand. And obviously, the question is to be forward with it by using some of the funds that we will not have expended in those same lines for the moment, from how we can see the R and M. Uh, Steve, I don't want to go backwards necessarily, but um just talking about that estimated expenditure of the seven hundred and sixty five, seven sixty three. That's of course assuming everybody in every line goes to the max of zero without their lines. Having spoken with the facilities coordinator, he has about fifty one thousand. That he doesn't anticipate spending in his R and M line, plus even additional funds in other lines, the janitorial. I think we spend as much in janitorial as Ethel and and post fall. And so I guess the question for the board is whether or not to move forward. Uh, we would need to use some of the funds that will be remaining at the end of this fiscal year in the repair maintenance lines. Uh, fifty one thousand two hundred roughly. Uh, there's also twenty eight thousand that won't be spent in janitorial. So the point is there, the question is whether or not uh at this time uh we want to move forward with the ADA ramp and the repairs to the in Harrison. But anyway, most of that's on the memo, but just so you know where the money would be coming, it would be coming from twenties in uh this uh budget we just looked at, which uh the facilities coordinator anticipates not having to spend uh for variety of reasons, mostly because of the the non-use of uh some of the buildings and the savings there. So uh little picture within his own little uh department, it makes sense. It's a big picture across the whole thing regarding the carryover and and what might be best practices uh for for that number against the decision, which was those who wanted to look at it. Um, that's the information I have.
Trustee Robinson?
So can I ask um facility manager question firstly?
No objection from the board.
Uh, are you, are you pretty happy with the improving the French drain situation?
Yes.
Yeah.
It needs to be done. We can keep it going, we need to.
So I mean, just because the way it was written, it I it just seemed like, I guess I just reread it and it sounds more concrete, but so that would fix the problem, not just like a temporary or just like half fix, it would actually fix it. Okay. Um, I also, um, you know, we've seen this before, I believe it was on the roof in Hayden where it was being put off uh for different reasons here and there, but um every time the price jumped up tremendously. So that's something to keep in mind for the trustees.
Trustee class?
So I looked at this packet, but uh it's mainly, you know, the bonds and assurances and so forth. Um I didn't see a description of the work. Is there it's it seems like it's two projects, I mean, the French or the drain for the water and then the ramp. And and I'm wondering if I, if we can just split it, do the ramp next year.
We can't, we have to like up the bids, you can't show us that big time convergence, then you sort of have to go out for bidding and people can do that.
Because the description of work is both a project.
Which is next.
Trustee Robinson?
And again, uh, we've been looking at this ramp for quite a long time. Uh, Cher and I were, we were on the board when we were looking at this. Uh, and it was it was way less at first, but then they realized they had to do a bit more because of the slope. Uh, but it wasn't this price. So I would personally not want to put it off, especially since right now in facilities, there's extra money to be had that could cover this. I don't think it's a good idea. I think prices will only go up if we put it off.
I agree with trustee, trustee Robinson. Uh, trustee class?
Well, my concern is we're hurt on money, and I would like to so I would have had the option, I'd like to put part of it off till next year. Kind of, there's a whole bunch of confusion going on with this ICRA payments and the work still being done. I'd like to get through all of that before we go take on other things and just, and it seems like the money is I I'm not one to say that we need two months' worth of of uh funds in the carry forward. I think that's extra, but we're cutting it close and I don't know whether other things are going to cut it close. So I myself would I I don't know what it would take to get another bid uh to split it, but that's what I would go for is two, two separate projects.
Assistant Director?
If we went out for another bid, um would delay the project start by probably at least four weeks. By that time, you're probably getting into winter weather. That would also increase the price because um this team that had the wing bid is already doing some work in Harrison. And by that time, that work will be done, so they will have to charge for transportation and things like that at a higher rate.
See, Hannah?
I think it's the director, I think, indicated that we wouldn't necessarily try and spend down all the money in all of the departments. Between them not doing that and facilities having the capacity to, I think, put fifty thousand dollars into it, I would suggest we probably get the job done. It's 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 been an issue before I came on the board because it was planned for the twenty twenty three budget, I think it said, which means it must have been discussed in an existing, at least back in twenty twenty two. As a mobile buildings, is she putting a jacket building up to make a longer ramp? Uh, probably not, but uh anyway, I think it probably should just get the job done if we're not if we're not putting ourselves at financial risk, I'd rather, I'd rather get it finished with.
Justie Campbell?
No, I understand that um the reason the price increased was because of the ramp. They had to actually redo the entrance or to accommodate this ramp that they needed to make it longer. Okay, and so I also feel that this is necessary to be taken care of now and that with the extra money that has not been used, that is available, that we can put that towards this project and get this done.
And treasurer have any?
Okay, I am bringing it down because prices are just going to go up.
Okay. Alright, uh, so we just make a motion to uh approve the Harrison Libraries Facility project proposal. Justie Hannah?
I move that we um say uh give permission to move forward with the Harrison Library Facility to repairs, both being the uh branch training issues for drainage. Oh, I don't want to give you all that to write down. Sorry, I forgot about that.
Take your shirt and symbol.
Okay, I I move that we uh give permission to proceed with the Harrison Library Facilities.
Project.
Project. Thank you.
It has been moved to give permission to proceed with the Harrison Library Facilities project. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Uh, any opposed? Okay, one may noted. Alright, and the Harrison Libraries Facility project is uh approved to proceed. So now we will be moving on to the next uh line item ten, resolution CLN nine nineteen twenty twenty four dash two, change of bank signature cards. So we have new director and we need to change the signature cards. Is there any discussion on that?
No.
Okay, it doesn't look like it. Okay, uh, so then I would entertain a motion to uh accept resolution or proceed, see or accept, move forward. Uh, move forward with resolution CLN nine nineteen twenty twenty four dash two, change of bank signature cards.
Justie Campbell?
I move that we approve resolution CLN zero nine point nineteen point twenty twenty four dash two, change of bank signature cards.
Okay, it has been moved to approve resolution CLN nine nineteen twenty twenty four dash two, a chain of bank signature cards. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, it sounds like it was unanimous and the uh motion is approved for resolution CLN nine nineteen twenty twenty four dash two, change of bank signature cards. Okay, and then we will be moving on to circulation statistics. Any comments or questions?
Justie Hannah?
Yeah, it appears it's a new format, or at least it's a cleaner looking spreadsheet. The only thing that throws me off a little bit is the, where it says total circulation or each of these things or physical item circus. I think that's a monthly number. I don't know if I should put it parentheses, month or current month, if that's if that's what I'm reading, because I couldn't figure out how the numbers anywhere were so small that those, or those uh rows, I'll call them. So I just, I I'm assuming that if I read that correctly, we're looking at the, you know, Ethel and the uh, anyway, across the way there. That that they monthly, yeah, I don't know if it would help to put monthly in parentheses next to that. Just make it clear.
Since August.
Plus an August report, yes. Right.
That's the month.
Right, okay. Not a big deal.
Anything else if we leave it on? And trustee class?
So on the, I guess, the backside, new papers, by part type, that's new cards. That's new cards for the month we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, so. What, what again is the difference between minor? Minor limited and teen limited. My, is minor, anybody under? Go ahead.
So I'll just start with adults. So adult is 18 and older. They have open access to the entire collection. Minor is zero to 18 and they have open access to the entire collection. And then minor limited is zero to 12, where they only have access to children's. And then teen limited is 13, I think to 16 or 18. I can't really remember right now. And they have access to children's and teen. So the one that's just minor is for children who are required to have their parents' signature. On the card application and they can have access to anything in the collection.
Trusty Robinson. And to be clear, when a parent has to sign their minor child up. They're given the option of, of the different card choices for their minor every time.
Correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
So.
Trusty Plas.
So the next line down, current cardholders. There are 9,000 across the CLN, 9,235 minors that have access to the entire. Library, including adult section. I know. Okay. And. Remind me again, how often do you, or if somebody doesn't do, check out anything or use their card for years, they get dropped or. How, how often or what's the time until they get dropped?
Um, that's more of a CIN policy that I would have to look at. I want to say like if it's inactive for three years, but I don't want to be quoted on that.
Trusty Campbell.
So there's no record for young adults. I see the teen limited is 13 and you were quite sure whether that was 15 or 16, but young adult would be like 16 to 17. Okay. So they don't have anything down here for young adult?
Right. So when the policy for them, uh, minor access cards was created. Um, the current board at that time decided that we didn't need to. Like jumble up and add a fourth layer of card, um, because they felt that, and I think I'm correct about this, that. If someone is a young adult, they would be old enough to access the adult material or they can choose teen material. And so they didn't need to be that specific. It's also hard to create collections that specific, whereas we do have. Um, you know, a teen collection that we created that matched the teen card.
Trusty Plas.
So just to clarify that, that is the issue that CLN. Decided to make anybody over 16 an adult. Right. If they're over 16, they have full access, even though Idaho law says you have to be 18 to get it. So in my mind, that has to be fixed.
And Trusty Robinson. Wait, wait. Idaho law says what?
An adult is 18 and over, not 16 and over.
16 and over.
Hannah.
I think that discussion is separate. That's, it's on the agenda part of down.
Okay. There is no further comments or questions. We will move on to our director's report.
Well, like I say, this will be a little bit, only date for, uh, good time onboarding and I want to thank my colleagues from the fathers to come and help. Uh, the only thing I guess is yesterday I did attend the CIN meeting. And the issue, I guess, the main talk at that meeting was the change to the courier schedule as a result of the change in operating hours. Familiar with. So those changes in operating hours and it's an adjustment to the career schedule. And that's what we were discussing. Uh, there's a slight increase in the cost for that, I think. For CLN, I think it comes down to about $3,000 as far as. The budget impact on these changes. And the other issue, um, which we talked about quite a bit with the courier was, I guess, uh, defining what materials. Are and priorities that he should be placing on. And so that speaks to the library of things. So. I mean, in short, the idea is that a bin, you know, books as a specific size, you can fit X number inside the bin. But if he has to replace that bin with a telescope or a drum set, then you lose four or five bins per library thing. So because the library things is growing in each branch and it's certainly a trend and, and something that's. Very much desirable for the patrons. Uh, it's just something we have, we're looking at in the contract itself. How is he supposed to prioritize? I think, I think there was some talk of 1.4 or some million items moved in here through this courier and, and that. If that's the benchmark and that's the expectation, always said on the changes, if you're getting 20 or 30 books in a bin and all this, of all items. And they're all turning into one item in the drum set. So, so there's just some concern on his part regarding, you know, how we should prioritize that. There was some talk of supplies for, for CLN. We use the courier to move supplies between branches, including program supplies. Uh, and so there was some discussion of that. So long and short of it is that, uh, you know, Kerry Wilson will, uh. Be our CLN rep on the committee that's been sort of set up to look at a sort of a more. In the contract, it's not very defined. So we're going to look at that contract, part one of it and, and define what materials means. And define the expectations for the courier in regards to prioritizing, uh, what is taken on given day. And whether or not a library that proceeds a courier in five days a week, you know, how that might play out and how he prioritizes what he's taking and what he can't take at that time. So. That was the, that was the gist of it. And it's, uh, the only thing that was really approved by CIN at the meeting was the change to the schedule. So that everything's lined up with the, the different operating hours and, and obviously paying for that cost. The, the new, uh, the new definitions for the contract is something that is now going to be discussed by members of the CIN. And then it was Kerry Wilson. Apart from that, um, one thing that was certainly on my plate when I first got here was to, um, hire a business manager. So together with the assistant director and the facilities coordinator, uh, I interviewed Michelle Fanzler. And she's currently the administrative assistant. Uh, we interviewed her for the position of business manager and then we extended the offer. And she accepted the position and she'll begin in that new law September 25th. So, uh, Michelle Fanzler will be. Yeah. And that's the next step obviously is to fill the administrative assistant position. So that's going to be a talk already. Um, a week ago to, to start posting that and, and that's, that's what I've done in four days. Straight past. Yeah. That's my report.
Any questions? All right. Well, thank you very much for jumping right in. Um, all right. So we will move on to number 13. Discussion of 2024 to 2025 board calendar. Trusty Hannah.
Um, yeah, I would, I would say for my own readability on this, um, if we could have a break in the, well, part of rows, it's just. It's horizontal between the date of April, May, June, until you get to the different libraries Hayden. No matter what I do, my eye goes to the top and sees so much at the top and looks down. So it would be helpful visually for me, but one return or something in there, an extra cell to push that thing down. That was my one comment. Uh, another comment I had was, uh. Is this the appropriate place to put the different policies as they're approaching their three year anniversary review dates? Is, I think I saw that once in a pad. I'm not certain. And, you know, we, we have one, obviously we're working on now, but. And start plugging those in so that we don't have, um. Policies exceeding those dates, but I'm not saying it should be here now, but it's just that it's the kind of thing I think that probably belongs on there. So we know. We have to at least redo certain policy.
Trusty Robinson. I would absolutely love to have that done. Um, I think that, um, trustees in the past had, had asked for that kind of thing and been, um, turned down. I think it's a great idea and it doesn't mean you have to necessarily. Go by that schedule necessarily if something else more important comes up, but to see. Policies that have to, that haven't been looked at, like for instance, what group are we supposed to be doing this year? The retention policy, which we still have not done. Um, so I'm, I'm definitely with the trustee and it was saying. Put that on the calendar. If it's the proper place for it, I think would be very helpful for everybody to see. What base work we're supposed to actually be doing and get it done. And I'm glad to see the, uh, the library tours back. Uh, those are going to be happening again and. Uh, also for under July, it says new trustee orientation. My personal feeling is that that should be before new trustees come in. Uh, that's the way it was when trustee Robinson and I came in that we had an orientation. Before, you know, we were expected to know what was going on. Um, I'm just, I think that would be helpful. Uh, trustee Plas.
I would prefer to not see the policies go on to this. If we could give it, make this take multiple sheets to out, up just the. A separate sheet that goes with this with. All the policies in, uh. Sequence of when they're due, you know, for. Just, just right the month in which policies should be reviewed by them. But, um, I think there's. Probably quite a few and it's going to make those two. Too full.
Hannah.
If we were to do that, I would say that it should be sequenced then as the. What's still is the oldest of what it needs reviewed first at the top and work its way down to the one that's been reviewed most recently. But I, I can go either way on that. I don't care if it's on this calendar or a separate calendar.
I'm good. Either way, whatever works for staff.
It should be completely redefined. I think this has been in use. You know how long.
I'm, I'm sure we can figure a way to show you both options and.
Okay. So at this point, we would just be approving the basic skeleton and always be added to later. Okay. Um, there's no further discussion. I would entertain a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 board calendar. And just plus.
I move that we approve the CLN 2024, 25 board calendar.
Okay. Has been moved to approve the CLN 2024, 2025 board calendar. Trusty Robinson. What exactly are we approving? Just to have it or all the locations? Uh, well, I think, yeah, I think it's good to know in advance, you know, where we're going to be meeting and, and so staff can make all the reservations and. And things like that. And things can always be changed later, but it's just good to have a basic outline. Okay. The intention. More further discussion? Best plus.
So we skipped minors this year. And we didn't want to do it in October. I forgot about that. Now, um, is that because? It's getting too late in the year to do it. I, it looks like we normally do it in September. We didn't want to do it in September because the new library director. Could we make off over the minors?
Staff have a preference on it?
No. Whatever it is, they'll see.
Is, is it? We schedule something in the minors this way? Next month?
Yeah. I mean, we just need to. It'll be like the first library report and the catalog. So you need to make sure the managers prepare for that. And that there are programs happening that day and that would occupy the space.
Okay. So we could possibly improve it as is. And then if something can be worked out. Then we'll go to minors next month. And if not, then we're meeting in right here. Trusty Hannah.
What happens? What gets deleted then? Because it appears, if we're talking about the November, we are spending the Athol. I assume Athol possibly open. Looking right one.
October.
We're talking about October.
Oh, you're right. Okay. It's blank. My, my apologies. I jumped ahead.
No, I didn't see. I did listen.
Okay. Um, okay. So understanding that it might be changed by, uh, for October. It has been moved to approve the 2024, 2025 board calendar. There's no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. It sounds unanimous. Uh, the 2024, 2025 board calendar is approved. And then we will be moving on to discussion of library cards for minors policy and adult access only restricted area policies. Uh, trustee Hannah.
Yeah, I want to back to see where we were on this thing. I spent, uh. More time, I'd like to say, listening to two different meetings on this. And the last. Thing that went on, I believe we got through it, it looked like the entire. Draft policy or the changes. And then trustee Plas was supposed to email this draft to the chair. And the chair would in turn send it to counsel for review. So I don't know if that was though, but that was, that was when I picked up. Listening to exactly where we left off because I couldn't remember. So I had to listen to the recordings. But that's, that's my understanding of where we are regarding the library cards for minors policy.
Not sure that I remember. I didn't send it to, I didn't think that we were finished yet, but I guess I should have gone back and re-listened to it also. And trust plus.
Oh, this, this was in July that we approved it and it was sent to the attorney. But then we came, and he came back in that next meeting and told us, this is not good because of First Amendment, we're going to be denying. And that was also when we, I believe it was trustee Hanley. Moved to, uh. Introduce my. Access or adult only access policy. And what that was doing was going to change this policy. So we really haven't done anything with either of that. So I, I think we, I think we need to. Not just concentrate on minors, we, we, we need to, the minor card policy. We need to look at the other one. That's what we started doing because what the minor card policy would do was that would be add a. Satisfy what the attorney recommended, add a fourth level, which would be open access. For minors except. The restricted adult area. We, we haven't already done that to this policy yet. So I, I would say we need to work on the other one first.
Trusty Robinson. So aren't we, don't we now have a, a, a new draft for this packet? So I'm not sure why we're talking about the old one that was, was it or was it not sent off to the attorney? Um, because isn't there a brand new one right here? August 8th, 2024 or no?
That's the other.
July 18, 2024? Are these the ones we're working off?
Yeah, there are two policies. We approved, voted and approved the minor card policy in July.
Well, we did, we, we didn't vote to approve that, but.
We, we approved going to the attorney and he mixed it. And that's when we introduced this on August 8th, August 15th. So we haven't touched the minor card policy. But I think this is what we've been doing here, like through the open and access, because that influences what we do to the. But I think this is what we've been doing here, like through the open and access, because that influences what we do to the minor card policy.
Trustee Hannah?
Well, I tend to disagree. I listened very carefully again to the entire meeting from July 18th. The start time on that was two hours and seven minutes and ended in two hours and 48 minutes. And then I listened to the board of trustee meeting from the August 8th meeting. And that went from 1:34 in the afternoon until 2:08. At the end of that last, at the end of the meeting on the, on July, let me back on second. The August one, we touched on the card policy, talked about it in general. We didn't make any changes, which I forgot. And also, but we did introduce or trustee plus introduced the adult access area only. And that was the primary part of the discussion in August. Uh, so, so we did, when I listened to it, we finished, I, I, I mean, I do agree, we need to go back though and look at the card policy. Even though it appears we finished it in a meeting. I, I, I want to make, uh, again, it's a short prepared statement regarding the card policy and the adult access area. And this is falling in line with my understanding and listening to counsel, uh, not privately, but privately publicly a few times. And so what I'm going with is this, I'm going to say, assuming certain genres contain a preponderance of immaterial likely harmful to minors. And I think we use the term shelf locations, adult fiction and adult graphics. And there's just examples of the kinds of shelf locations that might contain, be more likely to contain material harmful to minors. It would be financially prohibitive in my opinion to review every book in those areas. And therefore it would not be overreach, and that was, I believe, council's term. In my opinion, to designate such areas as adult access only, meaning it's, it's ridiculously expensive and almost impossible to go through every book, let's just say in adult fiction or adult graphics. And decide which ones need to be pulled up the shelf and sequestered, we'll call it, and which ones can stay. So that, that to me was a, a big piece of it because it sounds like financial is a reasonable excuse, so to speak, to group an area, say these, these, this area is the most likely to contain material harmful to minors. So I don't know how we do that yet. And then similarly, when it comes in my opinion again here to senior most minors card, if, if we go to one here, we'll call zero to 17. They will be able to check out any book in the library with the exception of those, and then we'll assume they classified adult fiction or adult graphic. And, and, and a big key word here, I have another statement later on, but we're told by the law that we need to take reasonable steps toward restricting access. It, it didn't say how to do that, but we're supposed to take reasonable steps. And I, I don't think we can go to every book and decide which ones are over the top and are harmful to minors potentially, which, so if for a large lift, if we think that we'll make believe 95% of materials that might contain material harmful to minors is in the, uh, the adult fiction area or adult graphic. I'm not saying they have to put another room, but they need to be controlled. And that's, um, again, that's, that's part of another discussion I have. Anyway, that's, that's all I got on this at the moment.
Trustee plus?
Well, and the, the policy that I put together for the, uh, adult access only. I, I felt like I was giving the freedom to the staff on how to do it. I do not think we should be, take, take unreasonable steps of building another wing on the library or making a lot of special locked room. Anyone, any of the libraries can afford a cabinet. Any of the libraries may have an extra closet. Put a log on it or something, but these are things that are reasonable, not expensive to do and could be done. minors. The youth, the teens, the young adult is on one side of a row. You come around to the end and walk around and you're an adult. And, uh, you know, how, how are we going to tell Pinehurst to close that off? And it's also the whole entire adult, that whole row. I think we need to give the flexibility to the staff to use a cabinet if they want. Buying a cabinet isn't hard. The idea of using a, uh, card lock, uh, when I, when I worked, uh, back in the eighties, before there was, uh, card locks and, and, uh, secure labs, we would have a combination punch, punch, punch. And you would go in if you were on the project. So you could do something like that, but how do you control it? And how do you know that somebody isn't emailing out? Posting the combination. That's why I came up with putting the key up front and we have to protect ourselves as CLN of being assured that only adults are using it. So that's the reason for the sign in, but I, I, I agree. If there's a bigger library and you could close off a section and maybe put partitions or something up, you could do that, but I don't want to hit us with a big expense of having to do more things. So the simplest thing was just get cabinets and put them in.
Uh, trustee Robinson?
The way I read the law is that the taking reasonable steps is the minor cards that we already have in place now. And the beauty of a small library that the trustee was talking about where it's tiny and just stepping around the corner, you're in the adult section. That also means it's so small that the employees can redirect a youth that doesn't have the proper card and they want to see what card they have, they can. Uh, they can redirect them to where they're supposed to be checking their book out. So the small library, um, space works both ways. Yes, you don't, only section would be right there, but literally an employee can see the, a youth just went around the corner and if they want to be, if, if they are vigilant, like I'm sure they are, uh, they could redirect that youth. I'm very much against a locked cabinet. I'm very much against a, a video camera surveilling it. I'm very much against having to sign out a key and sign it back in with a timestamp. I think the whole, if the entity took reasonable steps, part of the law, I think we are already covered.
Trustee Hannah?
Since both subjects, the card policy and the adult access area are on the same line on the agenda, I'm going to read another short statement I have here. I'm going to commend trustee plus for taking initiative to draft, like the first draft of the adult access only restricted area policy. It's a lot easier than us walking in with a blank sheet of paper and go, okay, what, what do we do now? Let's start. I read through his draft policy multiple times, and I mean multiple times. And I edited even more times than that. And it was so red in terms of the edits, I couldn't read what I wrote anymore, even though I used my document tracker on the computer. My wife showed me how to use it. Unfortunately, the document contains several minor card policy sentences, which needed to be removed because they don't belong in this particular policy, meaning if it's an adult access area, it's not, it shouldn't have card policy discussion in it. Additionally, the draft, the draft contained many procedural sentences. I know engineers like procedures, but we need a higher level policy only in the text. It's a policy, not, not a, not a procedure. Finally, repeating writing up the law and parts of the policy when the draft already cites the applicable statutes makes the document too long. And I believe, which I took time to do, I have a more concise, wholly revised draft version of the initial one that was done. And I believe it captures the essential elements of the plus draft while giving staff more latitude in how to implement the new law. And again, I commend trustee plus for providing a springboard for this board toward crafting a workable policy. I know that there's a lot of reaction from the public, whether it's now or in emails and other ways. And I understand that, but to me that was a rough draft. We have to start somewhere and I can't secretly go meet with another trustee and try and put a first draft together. So I think it was great that we got something started. We do need to address it. It does probably need to be a policy. And so with the chair's permission, I will hand out my one page draft. It's not formatted in CLN format, but it follows the same pattern. Would that be acceptable? We don't have to go through it today, but I would like to give it out.
Uh, as long as that's legally permissible.
It is.
Trustee plus?
Without getting into what trustee Hanley got now, I think there's a couple of critical things. One is first opening paragraph I put there. I think we do need to say why this policy has to exist. Because it's in the Idaho statute. They say that, um, public libraries must establish adult access only areas. It doesn't say adult or minors with permission slips. It doesn't say adults or minors 16 and older. It's adult access only. So how do you do that? How do you make something that only the adults can get to without introducing a big expense? So you have to, you have to move the minors books that have been objected to by guardians and parents. They have to get moved to this area. But if we're going to give minors open access, you can't have them just walk over to the same area and just get the same book that they would have got that we just had to move by law. You have to have an area that is closed off to the minors. I, I see no way about it. And this minor card policy we have now absolutely is in violation of it. And I think that, that's, that's foolish. We, we are at risk for not only the $250 fine, but attorney fees. If somebody, if somebody says,
Will the audience please keep it?
Somebody makes a claim that we've moved the book and now it's still available to a minor. They can take us to court and we have to pay attorney fees of both sides plus the $250 fine. We haven't solved anything by moving it to the adult area unless it is closed, that adult area is closed off to minors.
Okay. Um, so I'd like to get the director's comment.
Well, all right. It's it's very complicated in some senses. First, I'll dispel the myth that there's something absurd or out of the ordinary in having a room in a library that houses books, uh, that you have to ask to enter because libraries have done that for centuries, usually we call it special collections. Usually it's positive, never, never typically negative. But, but it's not absurd. So that we can let that go. It's not absurd. It has been done. Whether it's reasonable here, it might be too rare for me to say, but just, just, just so we can dispel that. It, it, it isn't absurd. Now, having said that, I mean, if you're asking my opinion, uh, professional, obviously, I wouldn't want to develop it too far. This is day four, like I said, only to find out that on day 360, there isn't much to put in there. So when I read, uh, in the public, it seems as though the citizenry trusts the librarians in our decisions. That's what I've read at least is that they, 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 they trust librarian, they trust experts. We're all very good since 2020. Uh, trusting experts. Well, you know, without being, you know, overly proud or anything, you know, MLS holders are experts. We are specialists in information. Um, so I would hope that, that trust will be extended to me as a director here. Uh, that, uh, uh, collection development, you know, is my area, especially a speciality. It's what I do. I'm an information specialist, like my staff at MLS holders do. So, so to speak to, to trustee Hanley, you made a comment, uh, about it, it being financially prohibitive to, to check every book. In some senses, I mean, okay, perhaps, but that is actually the job of, the job of the information specialist, the librarian is to know what information we are providing. From time to memorial, the library's role has actually been one thing, which is to be the, uh, holder of the information. Someone here mentioned Alexandria beautiful. For centuries, that was the primary goal, to hold the information, to, to keep the record of human experience, you know, available. But access to it is actually a newer mandate in libraries. Not everyone had access to Alexandria. Not everyone had access to medieval libraries. Um, so access is, is, is now, but right beside, you know, um, providing, holding it, providing access. So we, we kind of understand that it would be too different thing. So even if nobody came to the libraries, it would still be in my desire to hold the information of our culture and, and our, our history, right? That's, that's the librarian's passion is to hold the information and then make it accessible. So, but as someone else had mentioned here, we can't, we can't have every single book. This, this is not possible. I mean, there's millions of books published all the time. And so we're always making decisions. We're always making decisions about what we, what we collect. So I would like to be given the opportunity to assess the collection. You know, before we make a decision of whether or not we need to allocate certain spaces for, for materials. Well, I mean, when I read the legislation, it's almost, it's more along the lines of if the person comes across this thing, then it has to be relocated to the place. If we create a, a, a room, uh, you're almost saying, hey, let's create a room for, for, for this type of material. I'm not sure why one would do that versus other types of material, but, but, uh, one would hope that the quality of the material being purchased, uh, did not descend uh, into things that legislation, uh, in the state has, has deemed, you know, unacceptable. It's not, you know, being deemed by the trustees, it's not being deemed by, uh, this or that is the law. I understand the law, it's the law. So, so anyway, uh, again, I'm not even sure, uh, if there was a question posed to me, but, but obviously this is my first day and I, 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 I came here for, uh, you know, an interview a while ago and I'm familiar with, with the turmoil and everything. I, I'm here to, um, to show hopefully the community what a library really is and what it can be. I'm a professional librarian. It's my passion. And, uh, so again, I, I'm not sure whether everything needs to be discussed right now. I'm, I'm just, uh, I, I would like the chance to be able to, to assess the collection. You know, anyone who's, I have a master's degree as well in English literature, uh, you know, we make judgments all the time about whether, you know, whether the latest pulp fiction holds up to Shakespeare, holds up to Dickens, you know, Dante. Right? I mean, obviously like Herring is the information specialist and he's going to make an assessment upon, upon this or that. And a lot of people, the, the, a lot of people that were in favor of, oh, I want my children to have access to the whole adult collection for cookbooks and for this and that, of course, of course you do. Why wouldn't you? Cookbooks are great. Right? What we're trying to avoid, what the law is trying to avoid is, is for lack of a better word, the bad stuff. Right? So this is, I think, I think there's lots of ways we can look at it. But, uh, you know, I'm, I'm a hundred percent, uh, supportive of the trustees. Uh, I, I work for them in some sense and they were elected by, by this citizenry. So I work for the citizenry by indirect aligning there. But, um, I've just, I just got here and I, I'm not a hundred percent sure that not every, like these books can't be checked. I mean, if we're going to go, it's going to be just the romance stuff. Okay. Well, then we check it and we're more diligent. It is all about collection development and this is all about being a professional librarian. So, you know, there may be other professional librarians in the room and that's great. Uh, I'm the director of the library now and I just want to be given the chance to, to be that. And, uh, usually other people in these settings don't tell other people how to do their jobs, you know, if, if your expertise is librarianship, then please drop by my office sometime. We can talk it out. But, uh, I just know that, you know, the community has shown that they You know, the community has shown that they are willing to trust their experts, whether they're doctors. Or, you know, lawyers or whatever, they trust them to do their job, so I'm here to do my job. And uh, I would hope, honestly, I would hope that there isn't a need for a room. For material that is listed in, in the code as being objectionable. I mean, that would, you know, and a lot of talking, I'm not necessarily thought, the children side of things is, is a no brainer, I mean. You know, it's obvious based on even the few comments, you know, that, that we live in a culture war, right? We live in a culture war, we live in an information war and we have never sent our children to war. Other countries send their children to war maybe, but, but. Been in, in, in that kind of situation, but we never send our children to war. So I'm not sure why that's even an issue, so the fact that the legislation was required speaks volumes, uh, in regards to the children. Okay, in regards to the children, in regards to the adults, right? Public library is a neutral institution. Is a balanced, neutral institution, we, we are not journalists. We're not journalists, we're not, uh, we're not doctors, we're not, we are a neutral institution and, and some librarians. Maybe you don't see it that way, but for, for, from time immemorial, that has been the philosophy. My philosophy librarianship is that we're a neutral institution and balance. If you wanna, if you wanna pick out a hot topic, put it up on the screen. We will have books on that hot topic, we will have books in favor of it and we will have books against it, right? In the adult section. Because that's where, uh, the people that are eighteen years and older, uh, have the opportunity to, to analyze. Information about culture and, and what's going on, information and making decisions, okay, that's fine, that's, that's normal, it's, it's a library. But in the children's section, it's a different story, so there's a lot of different things at play here, I agree with the trustees that. Uh, you can't really decide on the minor card policy, obviously, until the other one is established because the, 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 they're kind of intertwined, but. Anyway, uh. If you're not familiar with what I'm saying, or, or for some reason I'm speaking a different language, I apologize. Uh, I am, I am a, a professional librarian who believes. That libraries have been and should continue to be neutral, balanced institutions, we are not agents of social change. Yeah, we're not, I, we're, obviously, there are professional librarians who feel differently about it. Philosophy of librarianship is not the. Biggest area of academia, so you probably can find a lot on it, the bottom line is. Uh, the public library is a neutral institution, uh, it is not religion, it's not politics, none of that stuff comes into play. Um, and uh, and that's what I believe is a professional library and I put them in delivery here, uh, to the community library networks. So. Uh, yeah, so again, um. I don't know, I don't know the state of the collection, I don't know the state of the collection, um, if you, you won't be able to now. But if you had searched any of the libraries that had been out before. You wouldn't have found the items that were drawn up in front of everybody saying, look at this, look at this, look at this. Because it's a decision that collection development people make, they make a decision to put it in the library. So we're all, all responsible for those decisions and as a professional librarian, I will come to the best possible library I can. Uh, to the community, uh, so again, you know, we, uh, we are not an agent of social change, we are not in the pocket of any agenda. We're not here to validate, uh, you know, one side or the other, one lifestyle or the other, that's not what we do. We are a neutral institution and have been so for centuries and we will continue to be so. Uh, and, and, and so you often see those T-shirts that say, I have something in my library to offend everyone, obviously, that's okay. And that will unfortunately be the case for the adult section, right? People who are in favor of, of vaccinations, you know, you'll find a book talking about how great they are. People who are saying vaccinations are bad, you'll find a book that says they called autism and this and that, right? We're a neutral, balanced institution, it's gonna be good. Okay, but I, this stuff here is different, we're talking, this is, this is sexualized stuff and it's a totally different ballgame and, and so, uh. That's something which I, again, like I said, um, give you a chance to assess the collection and uh. And I don't think there are any laws on the books, our general counsel can inform you otherwise, that say a library has to buy this or that. Or, or, or they, they come down on, on the professional librarian and say, you know, you must buy this book, buy this publisher. I shouldn't, I, I've never seen that, so, um, so it's up to me as the director. Uh, to do this and I hope that you will trust me to do so.
Thank you. Mr. Boss?
I, I wanted to follow that up with, uh. Uh, the director, what would be your approach if? We don't have any policy passed and we obviously won't today. What if next week? One of these forums comes in and it's obvious the book that is being talked about in the forum by the, and submitted by the adult. It's, uh, harmful to minors and it has to be removed in the minor section, where does it go? I don't think it can go into the adult section. Because if the child can just walk over to the adult section, we'll get it back.
Yeah, I know.
So where would you put it?
Well, that's a good question and I think, I mean, again, I, I just reviewed it a little bit, but you recently passed the, um, policy about. Um, about the request for, for removal and stuff, and in there, it's funny because I was reading it, in there it says something where, where. The item won't be removed during the review process except for the purposes of review. So I'm not sure how that's a good thing, but um. Again, going back to my whole point about, uh, you know, the room is. Under lockdown and not uncommon in libraries, again, usually for positive reasons, but, but it wouldn't. Be far fetched, I don't think, to have a location, probably a single branch that, that, that had space for. Um, and I would, again, I'm just, this is off the top of my head, getting here before today, only reading a few things, but uh. I'm not sure why an item that is challenged can't be put in a place for review. That's where it's going to be. I mean, you know, what are the demands on the direction of review, do I have a timeline, I mean, there's sixty days to do something, right? But, but I need to review the material, so going back to trustee Hamley, from day one. We'll be proactively reviewing material, but all we're trying to do is beat. Uh, to the punch whoever else finds it, right? And then we have to deal with it, so no matter what we're dealing with, but the question is whether we're going to beat to the punch the person who went to the shelf and saw that book. Managed to get to page twenty-five of a romance and see the one, the one section, right? And then, and then there's the whole discussion there, but, but I guess my point here is simply that it is our job as the, as the librarians. To select material, to review material, to assess the material, that's, that's what our speciality is. And so I, I would, I, I don't think there's a problem, I don't think the public would have a problem. Um, with, with the idea that if there's a challenge item, like the law said, it gets moved. To an adult-only access, you can call it that, but in the sense what it is is a preliminary review stop. Where I'm gonna go in and look at it, while the other staff might go and look at it, some public person sees it in the catalog, hey, I noticed that this book is over in the review section. Okay, so then we have the quality, whether it is reviewable items, are they circulatable? For example, someone brings in a book, it's trash, water damaged, it gets changed in the system from, you know, circulatable to in mending. Or in this, or in that, still in the catalog, people still know we have it, but it's in a place where it can't be accessed because it's water damage. Usually that's the technical service and office, right, so. I'm just saying, that would be my, that solution would be that obviously we'd have to deal with the law. So someone comes forward and finds this book, or I'm going through it and I find the book, we need a place where this is going to be reviewed and assessed. Which is my job, um, so that would be my first thought. But, but after.
Um, hold on, we need to, uh, let someone else speak, uh, Trent Campbell.
Okay, so, uh, the way I understand the law is that. When there has been a form. Given for a review. You do have the thirty days to review. And then you report back. To the minor or the adult, what your decision has been. If that parent does not agree and says, no, I still believe this is harmful, then it goes to the board. Then we have sixty days that we. Okay, and so I think that's, that's the dilemma for me is that. I definitely want. Uh. A type of minor card that would not have access to adult access only, but would have access. To the rest of the library to take out a book on George Washington, you know, as a minor. Um, in the adult section, but it's not, we don't have access only. And so there does need to be a separate entity. For obscene or sexually explicit material out of minors' reach. Especially those that would have access to the whole library to take out a cookbook. And, uh, again, that is to protect not only the child, but also. The library from any kind of litigation or any kind of court action. Um, because things were not taken care of. From a parent or a minor's point of view, that other material that was considered harmful.
Uh, yeah, again, uh, I'm not, uh, general counsel can probably help me with this, I'm not, what? Is the danger of the litigation in the thirty day period or the sixty day period or only after the decision is made? The fact that they found it on the shelf. Is, is, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, like, so if it's, they find it on the shelf. And that was the test where, oh, they found it and therefore boom, you're in trouble. Then yeah, we'd have to be more, we'd have to move through it quickly, but it's not, it's, they found it on the shelf, now we have to make it, so basically. It actually reduces the financial burden on the staff doing this job, right? They're finding it, we're finding it, it's there, how did it get there? Well, that's what I was talking about before, it got there because someone made a decision to put it there, professional librarian, assuming, right? That's a whole other story, that's philosophical discussion, but I'm saying that in this particular case, you're not getting. You know, there is no litigation once it's found. Right, it's after it's found, it's brought to me, I get thirty days, you get thirty days, right, or whatever. And then decisions made, so then the uproar from the community might be, well, uh, the library director agreed that it was, that it fell within the law. Then you take that to the law, because I'm, I'm a professional librarian who's living in this state and this is the law. So if I look at the material and in that thirty day period, then you know what, yeah, this definitely fits the law. That's why we have a general counsel, that's why, uh, you know, we need these things, so it fits the law. So then the question is, I guess, the next question would, well, if it's in a minor section, it probably doesn't belong in the minor section. If it's in the, like, anywhere. Just in case people are confused about what I'm trying to say, right? Librarians never did this before. If this was the case, you would have found materials like this at any point in time in history, right? We're deciding to buy published material of a certain quality, it has stuff in it, we're looking at it and we make the decision to buy it, that's our decision. We could have made this decision in the nineteen thirties, in the eighteen twenties. If it was being published at that time. I mean, they were, they probably were, it's probably something in the back alley with a little pamphlet or something, okay, but see, we, anyway. That's professional library philosophy, which we can get into another time, but anyway, ba- bottom line here is, I, I, I don't have the answer to. This scenario, found the bad material, reviewed the bad material. You reviewed the bad material. It somehow escaped the law. Or, I guess put it this way, it actually fits the law, yeah, it is bad material, therefore now what do we do with it, right? I, I guess the question is, why is the library bound to collect it? Why is the library bound to collect it? If, if, if it is. Decided by. Consensus or something, that the library is bound to collect it. Then I guess we're all, not just us, but everyone is going to be moving towards a special collection. Everyone has a room in their library, which is the special, and someone got upset for the term slot room or whatever. I, I mean, you can call it whatever you want, you have a really nice official name for it, but that's what it, that's not saying that's the smart, but I'm saying, that's what it is, it is a room. Designated, so for example, if I get a donation, if I get a donation of, uh, twenty-five rare books, first edition Dickens. I have put it in a room, it's a special collection, you only get to go to with gloves on and all that stuff, that happens all the time in libraries. I'm not saying that's what we should do, I'm just saying that that is a possible outcome. If we go down this route where the library is bound. You must have this material, yes, it's been designated as obscene or whatever. But this law is not saying adults can't access it. This law is just saying children can't access it. So basically, if you think about it, it means that libraries. Uh, can, or I guess the question is, are they free to or are they bound to collect obscene materials? For the benefit of adults. Are we bound to collect obscene materials for the benefit of adults? Now, I just moved to Idaho, so, but it's funny because I drive around here and I see this store called Adam and Eve. Okay, I don't know, I don't know if we can go to, I know I'm being, obviously, but, but I, okay, now. That's a special collection. For some. Is that what we want in the library? We're now, the library has, because we're supposed to have obscene materials as long as they're not in the children's section? So. Either you trust your librarian or you don't. Right, and you can all become librarians, you go to school, get the degree, get the job, and then you can become the experts. Right, so. This is a very complicated situation, but not because of, you know, the law. It really fundamentally comes down to, you know. Is the library, is the director of the library, is a librarian. The expert and free to make decisions about what should be in the library. If not, then you have to change the whole paradigm and you guys all just come in and vote, here, should I buy this book or not? And everyone votes on it. But no, you, 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 you assign, you, you, you vote for officials and they, they, uh, in turn hire a director and then. And so we live with. So. I can't answer the, so, like I said, I obviously said it too much, but I just got here, so I can't answer the question, but if you think it through to the end. The end game is. Do you want obscene materials for adults in your library? And it's, this has nothing to do with, with freedom of this or freedom of that, or, because we can't have everything. We may not have anything in some topic, like, for example, uh, here in beautiful northern Iowa, we have lots of books on kayaks and lots of books on, on boating. But we probably won't have anything on, very minimal on, on like desert. Uh, digging, exploration or something, or maybe, you know what I mean, like, we, we, we build our collection based on, you know, our community. Right, two, we have standard items and then we build it based on our demographic and our community, so the question is, I mean, if the public's going, we want obscene material for adults. We really, really want obscene material for adults, it has nothing to do with cookbooks, it has nothing to do with smarter fifteen year olds who are being homeschooled. You know, having access to that kind of stuff, this is, obviously, we want that, we want freedom of access, this problem is the result. Of professional librarians making choices that require legislation. Otherwise, you would have seen this legislation years ago. We're, we're simply talking about sexually explicit materials. We're not talking about cookbooks, we're not talking, we're just what the law says. So, anyway, I don't want to take up all the time, it is my first day here and I'm, I'll be gonna be all over the news and all that kind of stuff, but again, I. I just, I just hope that the public can, can, can extend the courtesy to the director of the library that they might have extended to, you know, you know, the. The health experts in twenty twenty. When they said, trust us, follow the science, we're the experts, you know, uh, this is my, this is what I do and, and so I'm gonna hopefully do it here and uh. And under the guidance of the trustees and force, so.
Thank you. All right, thank you, um, yeah, I'm, I'm inclined. I don't know, it, it takes a really long time to get through. Uh, draft policies that the board has done because we aren't professional librarians. Um, I would like to wait till you've had more time to review and, and come up with recommendations. Anyway, uh, Mr. Boss?
I just want assurance, if we leave this sit. That one of these books that gets brought through, goes through the sixty day process, is verified to be. Uh. Harmful to minors. That it doesn't get put in the adult section, which currently is open to a lot of minors, because our minor card. There's nine thousand of them that get to wander the whole library. I just want assurance that it's gonna be kept behind the counter and a cabinet. I just want assurance that it's going to be kept behind the counter in a cabinet, a closet someplace. That somebody, an adult, can still check out, but is that what you intend to do?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I think, I think so. I think the idea is that I want to assess the collection, work with my, with my staff to assess the collection in light of the legislation. And if the public, you know, someone in the public hates me to something in the legislation, lodges the complaint, right? We get the thirty days. I mean, assuming we get to the point where this item is deemed obscene, but going to be kept. No reason it has to be kept if it's obscene. There's many reasons why professional librarians choose not to have something, just like there's many reasons why they choose to have something. So a deemed obscene has to stay. Then at that point, we do need to make a decision about where that material is going to be kept. If it ends up being ten items. Okay, that changes it. If it's four hundred items. That's, it, it, it's too hard to tell. I don't know. I just got here. I can't, I mean, I don't have, have an assessment of the collection. I mean, that's, I'll have to assess it to know and, and, you know, and then be able to tell what we're, what we're dealing, what was the magnitude? I, I, I mean, I don't know. I can't, I can't even guess what the magnitude of obscenity is in CLA. I haven't been here. I don't know. Maybe it's nothing. Maybe it's a lot. But in the end, yeah, at the end of that fifty days, it's deemed obscene, falls in the, in the legislation, minors can't have access to it, then yeah, there wouldn't be something about it.
Okay, with the audience, please not interrupt. All right, so our time is up for this section. And so we will be moving on to response to public comments, and that is response not to today's comments, but to previous months. Trust us.
I, I just wanted to say briefly that there was quite an outcry about the minor card policy previously, this one in July. That we were not going to let minors under eighteen have access to the entire library. I, I don't like that solution either, but I didn't have a solution for how to keeping, how to keep them from going into the adult sex or these other books are. So I'm, I'm listening to the public. I don't like letting the minors or having the minors not be allowed to go get their cookbooks and other areas, but it was all in an effort to prevent them from going into the adult areas where these books are. So that continues.
You got the conversation started. A lot of times that's what's needed. All right, so if there is no other response to public comment, we will move on to our trustee training by our attorney, Golden Boils.
Apologize, I only brought copies for the trustees and the director, but I'd be happy to email you a copy if you'd like one. Michelle? Yes. Okay, first off, I would like to say, welcome, Mr. Walters. Nice to meet you in the flesh and for this year in good spirits. I prepared a trustee training related to special considerations for public employees. And just for transparency with the public, this is a part of an effort to work towards risk mitigation strategies for our public entity to improve our loss runs, which are already really good, and to lower insurance costs. And so we're putting a program together over the next twelve months or so in preparation for the next insurance cycle, so that way we can throw them a stack of papers and say, here's all the education our trustees have done. Here's our efforts to improving our efficiency, transparency and fairness in the realm of public employment. So you'll see the first piece of paper that I provided. It's, it's five pages long. Titled Special Considerations for Public Employees. This is kind of a guide of where we're going to go today. I chose to dig into the First Amendment specifically, since we're dealing with matters of public concern. And then maybe next training, we might do an overview of what laws implicate public employees. There's a fairly good list of them in your Idaho Commission for Libraries manual. The one I have starts on page one twenty-seven. But that might be a good place to review if you want to familiarize yourself with just the breadth of the body of law, both state and federal that could apply to public employment. Public employment in general has some interesting restrictions and privileges that are not necessarily intuitive if you come from a private sector background. We start with the First Amendment. Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech. And we note the history of public employees facing significant constraints on their freedom of speech. To the extent that the unchallenged dogma was that a public employee had no right to object to conditions placed upon the terms of employment, including those which restricted the exercise of constitutional rights. It's a pretty heavy statement. We get that out of a nineteen eighty-three United States Supreme Court case, Klett versus Myers. We start to see a shift in the fifties and sixties by human rights legislation and cultural changes that happened as well during that time period, but there was a growing requirement for public employees to swear oaths of loyalty to the state and reveal the groups with which they associated, and that was one of the, the things that caused a shift in the Supreme Court cases to come out in their progeny. And those three are listed there. Pickering versus Board of Education, the Township High School District, it's a nineteen sixty-eight case. That case essentially held that public employees do in fact enjoy a First Amendment right to free speech. You'll see next, the second seminal case, Klett versus Myers, nineteen eighty-three case. It's a refinement of the Pickering balancing test into a two-step inquiry. The first one is whether the plaintiff, like the employee that suffered an adverse action, spoke on a matter of public concern, and then two, whether that speech interfered with the employers, in this instance, it would be the Community Library Network, their ability to discharge official duties and maintain a proper discipline. The third key Supreme Court case on this issue is Garcetti versus Sabios, two thousand and six case. Interestingly, it reversed the Ninth Circuit Court of opinion. And they were holding in that case that the plaintiff was in fact entitled to First Amendment protection, even if that speech was made pursuant to an employment responsibility. But they narrowed that speech doctrine to exclude speech made pursuant to official duties. And so we have a fairly liberal Ninth Circuit still, and I don't mean that politically, but in the sense, original sense of the defiant term, that the Ninth Circuit has given an expansive protection to public employees in the First Amendment context. Here in Garcetti, the Supreme Court restricts that somewhat. But since then, we have further case law that kind of opens that exception back up in an academic context. And it's not entirely clear how far that will extend into a similar scenario like the life. Which shares a lot of the sort of academic overtones that a maybe public university would have. So those three cases are frequently cited in public employee First Amendment retaliation claims cases. And in Greetham versus Hamkin in two thousand and nineteen, the Ninth Circuit set forth five sequential steps. A series of questions they'll ask where a plaintiff alleges First Amendment retaliation. And those are listed there. Whether the plaintiff spoke on a matter of public concern. Whether the plaintiff spoke as a private citizen or a public employee. Whether the plaintiff's speech was protected. And the protected speech was a substantial or motivating factor in the adverse employment action. Those first three, the plaintiff have to, has to prove if they made a prima facie case on that, the burden would then shift to the public agency to prove up four and five. Four being whether the state had an adequate justification for treating the employee differently from other members of the general public. And five, whether the state would have taken the adverse employment action even absent the protected speech. Similar to the McDonald Douglas Burton shifting analysis, you may have heard that term. So. What follows, you'll see underlined one, two, three, four, five. I've pulled the pertinent language out of the Ninth Circuit Greetham case for you to dig into more if you would like on the nuts and bolts of how the court would analyze each of these elements that must be shown for a plaintiff to prevail in a First Amendment retaliation case. And so for instance, under number one, a matter of public concern. The courts are saying, look, this is a question of law. We'll decide. This isn't going to go to a jury. It's based upon what is alleged, what was said, and we'll determine as a matter of law. It doesn't necessarily require an evidentiary hearing whether or not this is in fact a matter of public concern. And the speech doesn't need to be entirely about that issue, just substantially. And the speech will warrant protection when it seeks to bring to light actual or potential wrongdoing or breach of public trust. Idaho state law also has whistleblower statutes that will apply in this situation as well. And then in the Johnson case, the court here says the misuse of public funds is a matter of inherent public concern. And this is important because of the issue of qualified immunity. And so the court right here is telling, telling the CLN board, for instance, that if an employee raises an issue related to the misuse of public funds, they're going to find as a matter of law that that's a matter of public concern, right? And so we can't say, well, we didn't know that, so we should get qualified immunity for this case. They'll say at least as far back from the Johnson case, that was clear, right? So the qualified immunity analysis is, is going to be key in these cases. So the attorneys look for, where's the, where's the farthest back case we can find? That's fairly on point here. That's enough to warn us that this is impermissible conduct. So the rest of that I'll skip over, go to number two, private citizen. Because this one is an interesting question, because it's not super clear when and where and what you're talking about makes you a public makes you speak in your public capacity or in your private capacity. And I've included an interesting recent case. It's the second one in your packet, the Josephson versus Ganzel. This is hot off the press in September in the Sixth Circuit, which fairly well aligns with the Ninth Circuit's views on the First Amendment retaliation cases, not entirely, but they're close. And this case is about a medical professional who was a director of a division of a medical school, a public medical school. And he was speaking on matters of public concern. Controversial subjects like sexual orientation and gender identity are sensitive political topics that undoubtedly involve the matters of profound value and concern to the public. And so that's important because at least since Janus in two thousand and eighteen, the controversial subjects that we're discussing today related to our policies will be practically and almost automatically considered a matter of public concern. So if you're determining like in Josephson or Greetham, if the plaintiff is speaking in their private or public capacity. The courts will look to the, the content form and context of the given statement revealed by the whole record. So they're going to be pulling emails, looking at text messages, looking at the, you know, the YouTube videos and what, what we've said and what was said. The content of the speech is generally the most important consideration for the court. And the court will look at the point of the speech and factors related to the employee's motivation and the audience chosen for the speech. And then a key here is a quote from McKinley, which is a nineteen eighty-three Ninth Circuit case. Speech that deals with individual personnel disputes and grievances, and that would be of no relevance to the public's evaluation of the performance of governmental agencies is generally not of public concern. And this is also in line with the, the generalized exemption of personnel records in our Idaho Public Records Act as well. Number three, adverse employment action and causation. This will be the third step in a First Amendment retaliation case. The plaintiff will have to show that the state took an adverse employment action and that the speech was a substantial or motivating factor in that. In the Greetham case, the court did find in favor of the plaintiff. And that the action the defendant took was reasonably likely to deter employees from engaging in constitutionally protected speech. So it could be a, a chill of their future speech. And that would be enough. Retaliation claims involving government speech warrant a cautious approach by the courts because restricting the ability of government decision makers to engage in speech risks interfering with their ability to effectively perform their duties. And ignores the competing First Amendment rights of the officials themselves. And so the courts are indicating they're going to closely scrutinize and balance the rights of both parties in these cases. Here's a couple of examples on the top of page four that the court has found serves as a basis for liability under First Amendment retaliation claims, two circumstances in the Ninth Circuit. Retaliatory speech when that speech is part of a campaign of harassment designed to burden the plaintiff's protected expression. And then even if it's not part of a campaign of harassment, it can serve to meet that element when intimates that some form of punishment or adverse regulatory action would follow. There's a case they quote later, White versus Lee, explaining that informal measures such as the threat of invoking legal sanctions and other means of coercion, persuasion and intimidation can violate the First Amendment. So we'll move on to number four, related to the adequate justification in the Pickering balancing test. This is when after the plaintiff has met their burden on those first three elements that we discussed, then the burden would shift to CLN to come in and say that they had an advert, adequate justification to take that adverse employment action. So that burden shifts and the states legitimate administrative interests need to outweigh the employee's First Amendment rights. So there needs to be a reason why the state took that action. And the court's calling this the Pickering balancing test. Another element that's important here is why is that employee being treated differently than a member of the public? On number five, the court's going to look at damages and ask whether there is a proximate cause, and then in some circuits also there's a but for, I believe that's the case in the Ninth Circuit. And those are two different concepts. The proximate cause is something that lawyers use to say, we're going to say this is legally sufficient that, that A, you know, led to B. And it, and the but for cause is like, when you hit the paper, it makes the paper move. So think of it more in terms of like physics, it caused the action, that's the but for cause. But the proximate cause is the legal cause that the court's going to say, as a matter of public policy, will allow that action to, to lead to that result. So interestingly, in the Greetham case, he didn't argue that his termination was an adverse employment action. He argued that it was proximately caused by one of the defendant's actions, which led to the termination. And the court said that was sufficient as long as he could prove up his claim. And they said that the proximate clause element requires only some direct relation between the injury asserted and the conduct alleged, and exclude only those links that are too remote, purely contingent or indirect. This type of issue was also, the Ninth Circuit says we approve of that in Straub. And Straub talks about reasons that are unrelated to the original bias actions. And so they're, they're fights in Ninth Circuit case, we can talk about that later. And then the last note here is the Josephson versus Ganzel case. And this Greetham case, they're both an appeal from a summary judgment. And so the court's going to set the facts in the light most favorable to the plaintiff procedurally here. And the court's not going to overturn a jury verdict if it's harmless. And so the procedural posture of the cases is very important. But that's not as important as what law is being set forth in these cases. So don't get too caught up in, you know, where they're procedurally in the case. Both of these cases really set out how the court's going to methodically move through this First Amendment retaliation framework and analyzing a claim. So I've expired my time and I'll turn it back over to the board.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. Did anyone have any questions? Okay. Okay, trustee boss?
Uh, you're giving us this background because we're at risk of making erroneous decisions or?
No, certainly you're going to advise us when we're coming into any of these areas, right? No, the, the training shouldn't be construed as to relating to any, uh, personnel matter or issue or any ongoing litigation. It's simply educational as a part of, uh, ongoing trustee education.
Thanks. All right. Well, then we will move on to the next session, which is discussion of future agenda requests. Have any? Trustee boss?
I saw the note in here. Actually, did we skip over discussing that? Burns, right now? What was that on there?
It was in the packet, but I don't know. It wasn't the agenda.
Did we do that before we get to numbers or?
Was that meant to be part of the director's report or was that just informational?
Information.
Okay.
But we are welcome to talk about anything.
Okay, uh, trustee boss?
So, so this statement was made in here that basically Artwell found another option that would, well, make us whole, which I assume means get us back to the three million liability. Does that work? And then, uh, I guess I would like to see what the quotes were and is it possible to, you know, to, to cut it back some or something, but I, it seemed like the decision was made for us and I thought we were going to get a chance to look at it.
So I don't think I would assume that there were actually quotes, um, that he has to present to us. And he sent a separate email to me later on. And basically he said, the issue that he ran into is that no standard carrier will give us a proposal due to our high losses. So right now we can't even get quotes. And he was estimating that that was the cost to make us. He said that our limits with ICRAM are at five hundred thousand dollars and that we would need to buy the limit between five hundred and one million dollars for adding additional coverage. And that this would be exceptionally expensive with an estimate of seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars. To get that extra. And his summary is that um, we don't have a high limit of some of our liability insurances and it appears getting additional coverage would be exceedingly expensive moving into the future.
Trustee boss?
Because that was specifically one of my questions to him. And we get a supplemental policy, liability policy that would cover five hundred thousand to three million. As opposed to going and getting a whole new quote on everything, can we just get a supplement?
And that's what he's, he's seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars to get us to a million dollars.
Probably about to three million.
Okay, thank you for that information. Um, all right. So discussion of future agenda requests. Are there any? Trustee Henry?
Oh, I say, I need clarity on this. Is this for new things to the attic? Because obviously we need to go back and look at the library cards and adult access. So.
Yeah, just for. Just for new topics.
I don't have any more.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if there are none. Trustee boss?
Well, I think we need to go add in the top most eloquent policies for review to be on this list.
Yeah.
I mean, if we can do that, I mean, if we're behind by two years on something. In addition to the minor card policy and the little taxes, those are the two we're working on now, but I, I think we should start adding ones we're behind on.
Yeah, I think that that would be part of the director's job. All right. Uh, well, then going on to the next thing, set special and regular meeting dates. Any, anyone else? Trustee boss?
Oh. So we have to get something going with these policies and, uh, do we want to just wait until the next regular meeting? I think maybe you need a special meeting. Get the director two weeks to work on something. And I, it seems like we need to make some progress. So just leave it. Sit until next.
I'm inclined to let the director settle in and figure things out and, and, uh, come up with that. Uh, other opinions, trustee Robinson?
Well, I was going to say, I believe the director, uh, I believe the director was saying that, uh, he was like a little more time to assess the situation and, and settle in. So I don't think a special meeting to work on these policies would be a good idea right now.
Trustee boss?
And, and another was, uh, maybe it's not a court, another meeting, but it was to, uh, whether we wanted to have more discussion with the, with the directors on how to implement the budget this year or I guess just leave it up to him to come back and tell us what he wants. I don't know. We need an opportunity of another meeting to kind of review what he's thinking after he spent time and whether.
Yeah, I would imagine he'd bring that up if he, if he wants to do that.
Or the next meeting, if, if there's any reason to need and review loose ends or questions or whatever.
Okay, I am not inclined to have a special meeting, trustee Robinson?
I would assume that he would probably be having those conversations with his staff, not us at this point. I would assume.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, um, so it does not sound like there's a majority that wants to have a special meeting at this time. Then we will move on to the next item, which is adjournment.
I moved to adjourn.
That was quick. It hasn't been a move to adjourn. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you.